Okay, folks, welcome to the City of Lowell zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight is Monday, September 27, 2010, and this is a public hearing. We have several matters on the agenda tonight, and the reason why it's a little bit crowded is because at the last meeting, we didn't have a quorum, which requires four members. We had three, so everything had to be continued tonight. So, we're gonna take those items first out of fairness and efficiency. So, well, actually, we do have one request for continuance on Clear Wireless. So, if anybody here is here to speak for or against the Clear Wireless, I'm gonna call that one first because it's just gonna be continued if the Board approves it. So, that would be ZB 2010 number 000043 for special permit telecommunications, Clear Wireless LLC, 746 Bridge Street, to install three panel antennas and two back hall dishes inside the existing steeple, which will be partially replaced and replicated pursuant to section 7.6 of the zoning code. The petitioners have handed in a letter requesting a continuance to the next meeting. Do we have anybody here wishing to object to a continuance? Anybody at the public hearing wishing to object to a continuance? Hearing none, we should take a motion to continue.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to continue to October the 13th, 2010.
Second motion.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Bailey?
Continue to October 13th.
Mr. Belanger?
Continue.
Mr. Gary?
Continue to October 13th.
Mr. Perrin?
Continue to October 13th.
Mr. Noon?
Continue.
Okay, the matter's been unanimously continued to October 13th. There'll be no further notice. Anybody wishing to speak for or against that petition is welcome to come here that night on October 13th.
And that's a Wednesday evening, I'd like to stress that, Mr. Chairman, then to regularly scheduled Monday meetings due to a holiday. It's scheduled for a Wednesday, so I'd like to make that point.
Good point. That is the Columbus Day weekend, so it won't be that Monday, obviously. It'll be the following Wednesday. Okay, we'll begin the regular agenda. Anybody who is wishing to address the Board tonight, just please remember that you have to state your name and address before you speak. If you don't, they'll have to interrupt you, which is the way that it has to work, so please try to remember to do so. I believe there's also a sign-in sheet at the podium that you also have to sign your name and state your address. So, we'll start off in order. ZB 2009 000060, this is an administrative review of previously granted relief. Rodney Fisher, 1527 Middlesex Street. This is in an SMU suburban mixed-use zone to reduce the number of required parking spaces for martial arts school in accordance with 6.2 of the zoning ordinance. And I have a, I have to recuse myself from this hearing, so Vice Chairman Noon is gonna take over.
Yes, good evening.
You state your name for the record and the petition that you hear before.
Yes, Rodney Fisher, 32 Willard Street, Lowell. This is on behalf of 1527 Middlesex Street, Lowell.
And could you update us a little bit as to what you wish for today for us to do?
Well, there was some, during this, there was some, just some recent things that we just came across. We came in agreement with the bottom, Middlesex Rental, which is their bottom property, for lease out the space for them for additional parking. That was one of the changes we did. And then also wanted to request that, one of the members mentioned was that we mark, put in the lot, the markings for the martial arts school to park on one side, which, you know, those who were in place, and I believe I gave, submitted some pictures of it, and then also submitted an updated drawing of the, where the parking lots, the extra space is gonna be at, you know, in the leasing space. And we're only planning on using it when we need it.
This is a six-month review, if I recall correctly, the last time you came before us, before the six-month of the occupancies and operation of this business. It's a Thai restaurant, if I remember correctly, and you come before us to ask, instead of for us to review how you do with the condition that we placed on you, you come, or you came before us, the last hearing, that you expand the number of tables. And the issue that we have before, that have before us is the parking issues. And you have stated on record that you have spoke to the Middlesex Rental in trying to lease their space. Is there any documentation to confirm that you have done so? And is there a lease agreement before us here tonight?
Well, I submitted the papers already beforehand. I gave them to the building department. And then also, there should've been a drawing too, to show where the location of the space is.
Aaron, do you have any corresponding from the petitioner with the guarantee?
Did you get the plans that show the proposed location? I do have.
Yeah, we have received the corresponding from you, but the lease agreement between this petitioner and the Middlesex Rental, do we have a copy of that?
I do have that. I can hand that out. But also, there should be a site plan that shows, did you get that with the parking?
Right, we have that.
This goes along with that, then.
The one thing I'm not clear is with this petition is this, that you're supposed to come before a six-month for review on the condition we set, and now it's more like, more or less, a new plan per se? I'm not sure if any other Board wanna comment on that, but I'd like to hear it. Aaron, what do you think of this? Because this is not a six-month review on the petition that came before us originally. This is more or less a new plan for a new setting of occupancy in terms of the table and whatnot. Is that what you understand to be?
Sure, so I can talk a little bit about the other permitting that would be required for the proposed expansion of the parking lot. At the very minimum, this would require a filing of notice intent with the Conservation Commission, because it's within the 100-year floodplain. And I'm not sure whether or not the determination or certificate of completion has been submitted to the Conservation Commission on the previous work or not. If it has not, that would need to be completed prior to it, the notice of intent being filed. So, that would need to be cleared up or completed with the Conservation Commission. And then, an addition of 14 parking spaces to a parking lot of this size would also trigger a site plan review with the Planning Board. So, you know, there's certainly additional permitting and review that needs to be carried out for a proposal such as this. There is also a requirement for a driveway permit from the city engineer. It's basically a paving permit. So, those three things would need to be addressed. But as far as, as far as the six-month review, I suppose there's other things that could be addressed in terms of the restaurant and how well that's working.
Right. Before I turn, before I go back to Mr. Fisher's and ask if any, any audience would like to have any say in it, let me ask my fellow member if they have any comment on it, because then I bring up the issue. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Mr. Fisher, how many, how many spots, just so I'm clear, you would be, I guess, leasing out at the other property?
It's just 10 spaces that we'd be looking for, and it's only to be needed, used if the school needs it. That's all the intention of it is.
And it's strictly for the school?
It's strictly for the school.
Okay. And that's, that's what was submitted here?
Yes.
That we got tonight, right? So, that's the 10 spots?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Mr. Chairman, a question, Aaron, ask you a question. You had, you had submitted some parking table charts here, and I also noticed on the site plan, I guess I would call it, that we also received, that there's a shared parking chart calculations. Do the two have anything to do with one another, or is there any way I can interpretate what's...
They, they share similarities in that they're trying to address the same commercial facilities that they serve. I can go over fairly quickly the two tables that I submitted to the zoning board, just kinda give you an overview of what that is. Essentially, what I've done here is broken down the parking requirements for the different use types in both the new commercial building and that of the studio, the martial arts studio, and the existing 10,000-square-foot building. The first table on the top takes into account the special permit and variance that was granted in February by the zoning board. And from what I could tell, it looked like there, for the variance for the martial arts studio, the parking requirements were allowed or were reduced based on the square footage that was needed, submitted during that presentation from the applicant, saying that their contention was that, not that full 10,000-square-foot building was being utilized, just the 4,500 square foot. The remaining space was storage, restrooms, et cetera. So, under recreation, the line item recreation, you can see that it's taking into account the 4,500 square feet that looks like the variance was being granted for. And then, the 8,400 square feet is the remaining retail space used in the new commercial facility. And then, there's the restaurant space, 1,200 square feet, that is also in the new commercial facility. So, with the shared parking chart and then the special permit granted for the restaurant to reduce or to add a little bit more flexibility to the parking requirement for the restaurant space, you combine it all together, and the requirement's for 42 spaces for all of that is the, is the minimum number of parking spaces. The second table just below it, I just wanted to provide this for the Board's information, includes, assumes the variance for the recreational space, but it takes away the special permit. So, it's one space per, I think, 200, one space per 50 square feet for the, for the restaurant space. You'll still notice there that the restaurant is, the minimum requirement is 24 spaces. That, so you plug that all together into the shared use chart, and that extends the minimum required to 54 parking spaces.
And the number of total parking spaces on the site plan, was that 46, 47, 48? I'm trying to remember the...
The original site plan, not including this, this one that has the additional overflow parking, was, I believe it was 61?
Okay, 61.
I can check that. Just to confirm that here. I'm sorry, it's 62. Provide 62 spaces.
So, 62 for the total site. And Mr. Fisher's talking about another 10 if they receive, or they come to some agreement with the other party, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And the, and the reason why Mr. Fisher's here is strictly for the restaurant, if I recall, correct?
Yeah, I think the, if, it was the condition that required a six-month review on the, on the, how well the restaurant was, was working out, because one of the conditions, I think it's, condition six, limited the number of tables
Table, yeah.
In the, in the restaurant to eight, or seats to eight. So, it was just to follow up and see how, how the parking was working out. There was also a condition on, on that decision that required some place for overflow parking for the martial arts studio, for those events where they're doing, the special events where they're doing.
Okay. Mr. Fisher, what was the total number of tables that you were presenting for the restaurant?
Well, they just wanted to put five tables in there because they told them they only could have two, excuse me, that they could have two, and they just wanted to have five tables in there. And I, and I think the misunderstanding was that, at the beginning, was, was when she originally submitted their drawing from the architect and stuff, because there was two sets that she submitted to him and stuff, and they, I guess they went by their first one they did, which just showed, and that was under the direction of the building department, just for her to get the permit to start ahead of time until, you know, this, the issue with the ZBA was resolved with the plaza. So, she just happened to get caught up in it at that time of, you know what I mean, of this, us going through this process. And I guess the, the second set that was there that showed the five tables didn't get presented. So, that, and I didn't think she realized that, that owner of that, that restaurant. So, when they came and did the sign-off for her to give her the certificate of occupancy, she was told that she could only have two tables in there, so that kinda threw her through a loop. And even I wasn't even aware that was the case of that. So, that's how she ended up being part of that last meeting we had, which ended up, I know it was six months that we're supposed to wait, you know, because she, you know, she expressed her concern about her being able to, you know, function with just having two tables in there after she spent the money to open it up.
So, five tables would be the maximum that'll be in that
Yes.
Facility, right? And they also have a, they have a takeout business also, right?
Yes, they do, yeah.
Okay. And the employees there, it's pretty much a family-run business, is that correct or not?
Yes, it's just her and her husband.
All right. And I guess lastly, Aaron, so if we're talking about 72 spaces, I mean, it sounds to me like, based on the shared plan, that that should fulfill the need of both, I guess I'll call it both facilities, the recreation and the retail, plus the restaurant. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I just
Yeah, that's
I want to make sure I got the numbers right in.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's based on kind of the current tenant mix. There are two, I believe it's two spaces that are vacant right now. The, the tables that I did provide did assume that those two spaces would be either used by a service business or a retail business, which is one of the use types that requires a lower parking number. But, I mean, if, if another restaurant goes in, that could change the, the parking requirements considerably.
Right. And lastly, Mr. Fisher, if you're, if you're gonna have this other spot for the 10, 10 spaces, you're gonna have some type of signage that's gonna be posted to instruct people where they can additionally park?
Yes.
All right.
We also did another additional thing too, is a lot of the events that the school has, because they, you know, trying to be cooperative and with the businesses that are in that plaza and stuff, they split a lot of their functions in half, and we even, they've been doing a lot of them off of the plaza grounds. You know, we use Lowell Auditorium or UMass Gym. So, that's where a lot of the other events that they normally do, we've been scheduling there.
Yep. So, Mr. Vice Chair, if this does become approved, I'd like to have that as a condition on the signage. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Gary?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Just to refresh my memory, all the properties rented at this time, we got, we still have that?
No, still have
Two, two, two complete, two, okay. And you, and you referenced the parking is already striped and ready for the martial arts. Is that, was that a condition previous?
It's not marked as a presence.
It's just, it's lined.
We can make that a condition, you know, if we choose to, you know, get it to vote tonight.
Well, there is marks there. There's a, I got signs that point to martial arts school to park on the other half of the parking lot, and then the other half is remaining for the, the businesses that are in there, in there right now currently.
Correct. Well, then, my question was, because you had, you had mentioned that it was marked, and I was just trying to get a clearer understanding on how, how it is marked. Is it marked by line and number, or is it just arrow to sign?
No, signs, there's a signage.
Sign to point it, so there's no, there's no predetermined spaces for those spots?
No.
That's what I'm getting at. Okay, thank you.
Corey?
Yeah, yes, through you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I do live in the neighborhood, and I do keep an eye on it from time to time. And, you know, the restaurant appears to be doing well, or something else in there, because the parking is more often than not, you know, you're near capacity, not quite. And so, I mean, it's good to see the businesses are doing well, and that's great. But, I mean, this additional parking, I mean, all, we have a certified plan in front of us, and that's great, but there are several hurdles that you need to complete before we, I feel this Board takes any further action. You know, you need, you need to sit with the city engineer's office, you need a site plan review from the Planning Board, and you need conservation approval. So, I think it's a little bit premature, in my opinion, for us to take any action on this evening. I mean, it looks good, and I hope it works out for the best. I sincerely do. But, you know, there's some work that needs to be done here before we can, I think, go any further tonight.
Well, I think that's based on if we, if, for that, that space, that additional space, but I think one of the things that haven't been actually clarified is what we was waiting for, and I believe that's what it states on also in here too, is some clarification about what was the original request for the, the, what we was granted, the parking relief. And I think with just that number alone would be enough for us just to get the, you know, for the businesses that are currently in there right now.
Well, it, it could be, but, you know, again, as Mr. Perrin stated, you still have two vacancies in there. You know, so this, you know, but you, you don't know what type of businesses are going in there at this point. Do you have any new leads on the two vacancies at this point?
Well, I do, but I know that I'm not trying to have a restaurant in there. We're already aware of that.
But I, it would be much more comforting because of the special events at the martial arts studio. I know the whole building is less than half occupied, I understand that. But the special events, the tournaments draw big, big crowds, and I would like to see these additional spots go through. I would feel much more comfortable. But that's, I'm only one vote, so we'll see what the other Board members feel and whether or not we should go forward this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Corey. Rick?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with my fellow board member, Corey Belanger. We've been pushing this around. Every, every meeting, it gets the same thing, that we want you to go back to the Department of Planning and Development, speak to them, get a list of things you have to do. I mean, this rental of this parking spot is not even agreed upon. This is just what they're telling you they want for rent, for one to 20 years or one to 30 years. It's not an agreement that they're gonna rent it to you, or that you're gonna pay the, the money that they're looking for. I've been by there many a times. I've watched the restaurant, because it's been a, kind of a, a problem over there, because you were told from square one, from the first day that you started building the, that building over there, that you were gonna have problems with parking, and you'd have to get variances and relief. And when you first put the building up, it was all gonna be retail. And I spoke to many people about it, and now you have the restaurant, which is starting to squeeze you for, for parking, because you need more. And as Mr. Belanger stated, when you have tournaments over there, I've been over there, you couldn't find a parking spot. There was cars on the street, and it was a tournament going on that I found out about. And in that building, you're only using 4,500 square feet, you still have another 5,500 square feet that you could use, even though you say it's for storage. But if the master has to pay these, these numbers for, for leasing this, this extra parking, I mean, that's some good money there every month. And again, you, you still have to go back to conservation, you still have to go back to the Planning Board. And there is some confusion about the decision that was rendered on the variance for the parking for the karate studio. So, I want to have it clarified, so we understand what we're voting on. We have two things in front of us tonight. One's a six-month review, and one is extra parking. It looks like a good plan. If, if you can get together with Planning and Development, and we can get all these things listed and lined up, and we know where we stand, I would be for this, to vote, to help you guys out over there. But right now, it's very confusing, because you haven't been overseas, Planning and Development, you gotta go to Planning, you gotta go to Conservation. What happens if Conservation says, "No, you can't put the parking space there. You're dead in the water." And those are the things that we need to know about before we vote on it, because if we vote on it, you know, it's just gonna cause a big problem. And that, that's, that's the gist. I mean, they, that, that restaurant's really got more than what's supposed to be in the restaurant. There only supposed to be 10 seats in there. There's more than 10 seats. So, I just wanna, you know, caution you that you're asking for something. We do go around and look at the properties and look at what's going on. We just don't, you know, come down and sit here on a Monday night. It's, we take heed to what goes on. So, I just ask you to work with Planning and Development, so we can get this straightened out, so we can help you out, if we can help you. So, that's why. And the six-month review, and I don't understand, we are having a little discrepancy about the parking for master ons. We have to figure that out, because somewhere, I guess there was a, some type of miscommunication, but I'd like to work it out, and hopefully you can work it out between now and the next meeting or the meeting after that, that you can sit down with Planning and Development and square it away. That's what I would like to see, to be comfortable with voting on this. And, you know, making sure that you do have a rental agreement, that Conservation will let you put it there. I mean, you're in a 100-year floodplain over there. You're gonna pave it. So, those are the only comments I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. I think Rick is correct on either issue. The six-month review, it's premature for coming back on a six-month review on the restaurants, but it's also premature to come before this Board on the extra parking when you not even go before the, you know, the office that you should be going before, before coming to us, meaning the Conservation and DPD. I think everyone here, this issue been before us many, many, many times, and I think everyone in this Board would like to help and like to, you to resolve some of those issue that you have. And so, I'm not comfortable with it either. Anyhow, let me turn to the, ask the audience if anyone would like to speak in favor of this petition. Anyone like to speak in favor of this petition? Hearing none, that portion of public hearing is closed. Is there anyone here in the audience who'd like to speak in opposition of this petition? Opposition of this petition? Hearing none, that portion of public hearing is closed. Mr. Fisher, would you like to make your final comment? And I'll turn to the Board to hear the wish of the Board.
Well, one of the things is, I think that the confusion is and stuff, because I think every time we ended up coming here, there was something different introduced, and I think the original thing was just me requesting a parking relief, which when I, when we finished it, there was never a number given about how much was actually relieved from the martial arts school. And that's the one I'd really like to be, have resolved tonight. And I'm aware of the fact of the parking space that we're trying to get to, just to have additional parking for possibly future use for the martial arts school, for if they have events. And I'm aware of that, what the process is, because I spoke with all of those departments, and I even spoke with them over the building department and stuff, and sat over there and spent time with them as far as the calculation and stuff of what was required in the process in both the parties that we were speaking with from Middlesex, they're also aware of that too. So, that's what we're negotiating for that space over there, aware of what we have to go through. But I think the thing that, you know, without dragging along any further and stuff, is that if, if this, you know, this was clarified for what I originally came here for, and it just happened to be brought up at that, at the last meeting we came, you know, about the restaurant, you know, that brought it up for that, aware of the fact that it was supposed to be six months review. So, I have no problem continuing that issue there, you know, but I'd like to at least have clarified tonight, at least the, the number that, of the relief that was granted to us, because it definitely says it was granted, so I just wanna have a number, which it doesn't show on here, on your findings.
I think, Mr. Fisher, the number of relief with conditions for six-month review should reflect on the Board decision. You can check with the, with Aaron from the Inspection Office, or I know that you, from the record, from my recollections of what we did that day, was we said eight seat, and which eight seat translated to, to table, and you stated yourself, and you said you are not sure at that time. My understanding as well, that at the time when we approved this petition, with you expressed to us that most of the service will be a takeout, and that's what you said. And that's where it come about to eight seat, two table. And if things work out in six months, you come back, and we can talk about expanded and whatnot. And that's what we, that's what my, my understanding was to be. But you came back, I believe it was less than two months after the operation of the restaurant, and this time you said that, you know, you want more table. And it doesn't work that way, I, at least from my view of, of thing. So, that's all I have to say, and if the Board, is anyone like to come, give a more brief comment before we take a vote on this?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think the other thing we have to be cognizant of is the conditions, and I think Aaron might've mentioned this in his And I think Aaron might have mentioned this in his last paragraph of his summary he sent us, that there's certain conditions that we had put in here. And I think we better make sure that we either stick to those conditions and be consistent or if we need to modify, then I think Mr. Fisher has to be flexible to that too. So I think there's an awful lot of different things going on right now that I hate to say it and I hate to continue it. But I think the real issue is if he has a set of conditions now on top of the conditions we set before for him to continue on, is the board asking him to seek all these other conditions and then come back to us? And if he does come back to us, then I think we need to know exactly what we're asking of him when he comes back.
It's certainly fair. It's fair to Mr. Fisher's. But my understanding is that originally when he came back for review, he came back before the six-month review. And he came back on the conditions that, on a request that he want more table, more seat. And that's my understanding.
Right. Now, it was one of the conditions, is that the restaurant is limited to a maximum seat capacity of eight persons, which I assume meant two tables for each. So now we're talking, he's talking, Mr. Fisher's talking about five tables and, correct?
I believe he, I believe he asking for five table.
Correct.
That's what he's asking right now.
Well, I'm not asking for that. I'm just asking for the original one, what I requested for the variance, the parking relief for the martial arts school. That's the only one I want clarified. That's it.
That's what you request, Mr. Fisher. That's what you request. And that's not what we granted you with condition. We granted you with two table with condition. And that's what we grant you. You request five table and you come back now after we grant you with condition. You said you still want the five table. You're not comfortable with that.
No, I'm not talking about the restaurant. I'm talking about the martial arts school, the original variance I submitted to you guys. They never put a clarification on that for the number of spaces. It has nothing to do with the restaurant. It has to do with the martial arts school, the requesting parking relief.
You see, the confusing part about this is it's you who came before us on a six-month review and now talking about the restaurant. But you are not talking about just the restaurant. You're talking about the martial arts school. And with that, you need to have that review by the DPD and Conservation for extra parking. And that's my take on it. But, okay, well, what's the wish of the board?
Well, through you, Mr. Chairman. Again, there's too many things going on here this evening with this. I don't know how it got to this condition. But, you know, he's got a plan here with an additional parking to be added, which would be great. And I'd like to, love to see that accomplished, okay? It's the nature, you're borderline as far as required parking on this project. And it's the nature of the martial arts studio, okay, that concerns me. I mean, on Saturday afternoons, you have tournaments and that's when people are going to patronize the shops and the restaurants. So, you know, you're going to have problems here and that's what we're trying to avoid for all parties. So I'd like to see these approvals get done and you accomplish this parking, to be honest with you, before I go ahead and approve any additional tables or any variance of any sort. So I don't want to vote hastily, Mr. Fisher. I really don't. I want to see this accomplished so this project will, can live in harmony for many years to come. And I don't think that can be achieved this evening. I really don't, so.
Well, that's fine. I'll just, if you could, just give me the continuance, maybe just continue it. Because, you know, every time when I come here, you guys reintroduce something new. Because I just wanted to just the original one. That's it. Just the parking relief granted for the martial arts school. You know, the other stuff got brought up in it and stuff. And it wasn't that I mentioned it or brought it up and stuff.
Well, you're here tonight for a six-month review, but that's another story. There's a little bit too much going on this evening. There's no need to really. But if that's the wishes of the board, now, Mr. Fisher, we have, in October, we have October the 13th and October the 25th.
The 25th is fine.
25th? Okay. I don't know if you can get approvals in that timeframe, but again, I'm sure this board will work with you in that timeframe. So before I make the motion, would any other board members like to comment?
I think we need to be clear to Mr. Fisher's as well that this review is on the six-month review. This continues on the six-month review of the Thai restaurants.
Well, this says something different though. On here, it says the variance for the pre-approved, granted variance. That's what it says on the thing here. So I'm confused. That's what it says on the thing. So I'm kind of confused because it don't say nothing about no restaurant in here.
Mr. Fisher, I understand. I think there's a little confusion on both ends, to be honest with you. But you'll have nearly a month, all of us, so we can sort this out and let's do this right for the sake of the neighborhood and your project and your clients and your tenants. I think it'd be in everybody's best interest. I really do. So with that being said, I'll make a motion to continue to October the 25th, 2010.
Second.
Aaron, please call the roll.
Mr. Belanger?
Continue.
Mr. Noon? Mr. Bienvenue?
Continue.
Mr. Perrin?
Continue.
Mr. Bailey?
Continue to October 25th.
I have a question for you, Aaron. Does he have another matter in front of us besides the six-month review? He was also looking for this extra parking, right? I don't want to, that's what's confusing. He had a six-month review, came in for a variance for parking, so now, yeah.
Why don't I do my best to do a real quick summary? In February, there was a request for a variance for the petitioner. At that time, there is a variance granted along with a special permit for parking under 6155, which relates to restaurants, basically. Petitioners or applicants can request that the parking requires for restaurants be reduced through a special permit process with this board. Both a variance and a special permit were granted for those two issues with six conditions. One of them was that additional parking off-site be provided for special events related to the martial arts studio. I presume that the site plan that you received is showing additional parking spaces to provide that additional off-site. And in this case, if it's leased directly, if it's built to the zoning standards, it could actually be counted as parking spaces, which I think is showing on their table of uses. The other condition placed on the approval for the variance and the special permit was that the maximum seating capacity in the restaurant be held to eight persons. I suppose it could be broken up to four tables or two tables. It doesn't really, the condition doesn't really specify what, but just eight people is the max capacity. And then, one of the other conditions was that there be a six-month review upon, once the restaurant's open, to just, I think, review how effective everything's working, the off-site parking and et cetera. So the two things that, as a condition of approval, that need to be addressed is showing that there is some accommodation made for off-site parking for the special occasion, which I think is what's attempted with the site plan. And then the six-month review, just to review the operational aspect of it, which I imagine would include wherever that off-site parking is, how is that working in terms of providing adequate parking? And also, you know, is the restaurant, what are the impacts, what are the true impacts in terms of parking the restaurant is having on the rest of the project? And I should also note, the other conditions also include snow removal. So, you know, I presume that a six-month review would include that operational aspect of it, how well the snow removal is being applied. So the things that I believe that need to be reviewed at some point is the six-month review, looking at the operational aspect of off-site parking. There still needs to be some sort of off-site parking provided, whether it's through the site plan or leasing spaces nearby from a different commercial operation. This proposal that's shown in the site plan does require, however, a number of levels of review that we talked about earlier, Conservation Commission site plan. So those would need to be addressed prior to.
So we just continue the six-month review? So do we have to continue what you're holding in your hand right now for that site plan? I just don't want to cut him short where, you know, technically we make a mistake or we all set.
I don't believe that a continue needs to be made for that.
All right. No problem. I just didn't want to, you know, let him lose his rights. So we'll get it all clarified. Hopefully the chairman and yourself can sit down. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Thank you, Mr. Fisher's. Continue to 25th. Thank you.
Okay, the next matter on the agenda is ZB 2010 000032. Request a special permit in variance Good Times Restaurant, 1278 Gorham Street. To remove an existing, I'm sorry, to renovate an existing restaurant on the first floor of a two-story building. The proposed renovation expands the restaurant, providing more open area and additional 29 seats pursuant to Section 12.4B and Section 6.1.10 of the zoning code. Attorney Flood?
Mr. Chairman, for the record, James Flood, offices at 529 Rogers Street Lowell, representing Jim Booton, who runs Good Times Restaurant on Gorham Street. Also, 1278 Gorham Street, Inc., the owner of the property, Ron Perez, here tonight along with his attorney, Phil Nyman. We're before the board tonight to expand the existing restaurant to over 5,000 square feet. That requires a special permit. We're going to 5,280 square feet with reduced parking. And we're also a variance for the parking requirements under the zoning ordinance. The property is owned TMU, Traditional Mixed Juice. The building in which the restaurant is located is a two-story concrete block building, which was constructed prior to the adoption of the City Hall Parking Regulations. At the present time, a large portion of the first floor is occupied by Mr. Booton as a restaurant. And the remaining portion of the first floor is vacant. He'd like to expand the restaurant to that vacant portion. He also occupies a small portion of the second floor as an office along with a sign company. Jim has operated at that site for 12 years. And his business really can be classified as a family and neighborhood business. I would think if any of you people go in there on any given day, you'd have a real mix of customers from families with infants to elderly people who feel safe in the locale. The major reason for the expansion is to better satisfy his customers. The expansion calls for an additional 29 seats. And if you look at the plan prepared by Gavin and Sullivan, approximately 25 to 30 percent of the new area is for the expansion of the kitchen and also the construction of new bathrooms. Jim also intends to move some of the seating presently located in front of the kitchen area and spread out those seats throughout the remaining space. In addition to the interior renovation, the plan calls for the front parking area to be completely regraded, paved and redlined, and lined. The existing handicap spot, which is located next to Gorham Street, will be relocated. And the area on the corner will be landscaped, mostly landscaped, which will provide better sightlines along Gorham Street. We're asking for a variance to maintain the existing six parking spaces, which are located along the back wall of the building, which have been there since the building opened. They've been there for many, many years. But they don't conform because of the setback. And we're also asking for a special permit for reduced parking based on Section 6.1.5 Subparagraph F of the zoning ordinance, which provides in a TMU zone for restaurants, the parking requirements can be reduced. The engineer who prepared the site plan did a shared parking plan, a chart on the front of the plan. And you can see that based on the uses in the building, it does conform. We do have sufficient parking. There's also plenty of parking spaces on Gorham Street. And we've also made arrangements for additional parking with the Valvoline store located next to. I'm going to give you people a letter. I might as well give it to you now. I have a letter from Valvoline that provides for additional parking on their lot located on Weed Street. Plus, I have a letter from both Director Butters that are in favor of this. I might as well give it to you now. I mean, I would submit to this board that based on the shared parking chart and the parking available on Gorham Street and the additional parking at the Valvoline space on Weed Street, the site is more than sufficient to support this expansion. As to the variance, based on the shape and the size of the lot and the fact that the building was constructed prior to the adoption by the City of the Parking Regulations, I think a denial would cause my client a substantial hardship. And the relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without derogating from the intent of the zoning ordinance. I think many of you people have probably been there. Jim runs a fine restaurant. We're looking for 29 seats. And in order to make all of these improvements, it's necessary to have those 29 seats. So I'd urge you people to vote in favor of this request.
Okay, Jim, what is the normal hours of operation for Good Times? Or you can ask the owner.
11 to 9, 11 to 9.
So just I assume there's no parking issues whatsoever before then or after that?
No, no.
The same on the weekends?
Same on the weekends, right.
So the proposed addition's not going to have anything to do with adding another building or anything in that?
No, it's all within me.
It's all what you see right there?
Yeah. I mean, it's going to be used for something in the future anyway. So it's, you get what you have right there. Now, it's all inside, nothing on the outside whatsoever.
Yeah. I think that was my point. If it, he's going to, at some point, maximize the use of that building. And it seems to me, anyway, that, you know, I've been by that restaurant a lot over the last several years. And he does run a good job, do a very good job there. And it seems like if it's going to be an expansion, it might as well be within the same business that he's running, that he knows, that he controls. So there'll be less disruption all around.
Now, Counselor, what's the current square footage at the restaurant now?
The current square footage is, how much is it, Jim? It's over 2,000. We're going to 5,280, 2,500.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, Bill.
I have a question. Just a point of clarification. In the application, you mentioned 29 seats, correct?
Correct. He has 79 there now, Bill, and he's going up to 109.
So when I look at the, when I look at the plan that was submitted for the seats, why does it say 56 seats proposed?
Well, on either side. See, we're split. We've changed the parking, the seating arrangement. There's nothing in front of the kitchen now. He's just switched it around. It's going to be on either side. That's the proposed expansion. Right now, there's seats in front of the kitchen area, which he is moving. Right now, he has 79 seats there.
Right now, he has what, 79?
79, yep.
Okay. Well, I couldn't add up the numbers. That's why I was, when it said 52 seats existing, 56 proposed. Yet it said 29.
Well, I think he meant on the existing side. But if you've been in there, you could see that there's a kitchen area and there's seats in front of that, which he's moving.
All right. So the total number of seats, though, was 108 seats?
108, right.
Okay.
Anything else, Bill?
Well, are we opening for questions or are you going to do anything with?
Well, does anybody have any questions before we open up for the public, for Attorney Flood? You can do that again after as well.
No, I'll wait.
Okay. Anybody here we should speak in favor of this petition, in favor? Ma'am, please state your name and address for the record.
Please. Good evening, members of the zoning board. My name is Carol McColl.
Please. Good evening, members of the zoning board. My name is Carol McCarthy. I live at 64 Blossom Street. I'm here tonight to speak in favor of the special permit for Good Times Restaurant has before you this evening, seeking an additional 29 seats. In the Lowell Sun, Sunday, September 19th, Teresa Park, Director of Economic Development, stated that there's a lot more to Lowell than manufacturing. I'd have to agree with her. There are more restaurants than ever before, restaurants that make up the many different ethnic races of Lowell's diverse population. She also mentions sustainability in reference to describe a business who has had a positive impact on the city. I'd like to ask you, have any of you ever eaten at Good Times? If not, you don't know what you're missing. If you have, then you know what I'm about to talk about. I remember when Good Times Restaurant opened almost 12 years ago. At this time, the restaurant operated only from Tuesday through Sunday. Word got out fast throughout the neighborhood, the city, and the surrounding towns, and what a delicious meal you received and at a reasonable price. One just has to visit Good Times to see how popular it is. Going to Good Times is like going to your grandparents' house on the holidays. One receives a delicious meal and is in the company of family and friends, and if you're not family when you walk in, you're family before you leave. The owner, Jim, has proven himself to the neighborhood that he cares and is invested in the area. He's the kind of business owner that other neighborhoods would love to have. The grounds are always clean of litter during spring, summer, and fall, and free of large snow piles in the winter, and the inside is just as clean. The first exciting news we received in Good Times was when they announced that they would now be open on Mondays. Now before you tonight is the next good news about Good Times. Good Times is in need of these additional seats. Your board tonight needs to show the business that operates outside the city limits that you do support them. Good Times is here looking to expand, not leave our city. Please vote in favor of the special permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McCarthy. Anybody else wish to speak in favor?
Bo Colette, Falkland Street Lowell. I'm in favor of it. As a past cook and pepper professional at the Butler School, when we were trying to raise money for the Riff Program and for the future for the children, Jim was the first to volunteer the sauce and the meatballs for the spaghetti suppers. He was there, he's been there for the children of the neighborhood and for the school in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Sir?
Good evening, Councilman. My name is Dave Pritchett. I live at 112 Marshall Road. I've been in the neighborhood for over 12 years. I've known Jim for 12 years. The restaurant is immaculate. We're very happy with it being a neighborhood. In this time where everything is, you know, tough, we got a lot of chain restaurants and stuff like this. We have a family restaurant, comes in the neighborhood, works hard. I'm very much in favor of having the expansion, and I would hope that this council would think that also.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Good evening. My name is Diane Marie Page. I live at 26 Fremont Street in Lowell, Massachusetts. I sit on the board of the Senate of a Neighborhood Action Group. I'm here to support Carol McCarthy, a neighborhood leader, in regards to Good Times Restaurant. I wish to speak in favor of this particular business and the request that they have before you for a special permit in variance. I respect neighbors, as you know, and neighborhoods, but Gorham Street is a street of many businesses. Downtown is a neighborhood group, and there is very few street parking downtown. There are no private lots, but there are restaurants there. If up here on Gorham Street, there is, seems to be a little parking problem in a few spots, maybe we need to put up some signage, and maybe it needs to be enforced if that's an issue. I have not seen that issue on the times that I have been to Good Times. I have lived in the city a very long time, and I wish we had more businesses like this in the city. When you go to a restaurant, what do you look for? Clean, good food, a pleasant staff. This business has all three. I have gone there several times, not even a cigarette butt in the parking lot, not a fingerprint on the front glass door. The windows are sparkling clean. Someone is constantly cleaning. On top of that, the food is very good, and the staff is very pleasant. We have businesses that are leaving Lowell. We have businesses that are closing. We should thank our lucky stars that we have a business that wants to expand and a good business that wants to expand. I wish you were in my neighborhood. We need more business people like this in our city. Please grant this special request. Thank you for your time, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mrs. Page. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? We'll get to everybody. You're next, sir.
Hi, good evening. My name's Brenda Cronin, 49th A Street. I live two streets away from Good Times. Not only do people go in cars, a lot of the neighborhood people walk there. I've been there when people from Sunny Acres Nursing Home have come in with the ambulances to pick them up and that. The elderly people have a great time. When my grandchildren come from New Hampshire, and I say to them, "What would you like for supper?" They say, "We wanna go to Jim's." They call it Jim's, you know. I say, "Well, you don't like Nana's cooking?" They said, "No," but I mean, it's just such a family atmosphere. It's almost like cheers for the neighborhood. Everybody has a great time. Since our parish closed, a lot of us get to meet up there, you know, and a lot of the elderly people I've seen, they come in, there's four or five of them in a car. So, I'm saying with the parking, I don't see a problem because people, it's like a revolving door. People are always going in and others are coming out. Maybe Friday, Saturday, you might have a hard time to park, but like I said, I live two streets to the left. My sister's three streets to the right. Lots of times, we walk, and a lot of the neighborhood people walk too. But what I'm saying is, I'd be in favor of this because it's just an all-around awesome restaurant, and the people who run it are great. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corner. Anybody else, sir?
Good evening. My name is Charles Bonds. I live at 24 Saratoga Street, far from the Good Times. Me and my family have been going there for 12 years, and I'll tell you, every time we go, it's better every time, each time. The food is excellent. It's a great family restaurant. It's the best thing that ever, ever happened to our neighborhood by far. So, I just want to say, I think Carol McCarthy had the elegant words, and she was right on. So, I just wanted to say that I'm totally in favor of this expansion, and Lowell's very lucky, and we should all be proud to have a restaurant such as the Good Times. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Michael Lally. I live at 123 Andrews Street in Lowell. I'd like to speak in favor of this petition this evening. Good Times is a top-notch business here in the city. As all of these people have said, it is a family restaurant. Many of his staff, they're students at the UMass Lowell Middlesex Community College. They're keeping their business here in town, too. Let's support a local businessman who's doing a great job in the city. Hope you'll vote in favor tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lally.
My name is Ronald Savage. I live at 17 Anderson Street. I've been on Anderson Street for 40 years. I've seen businesses come and go. I'm not gonna repeat everything that everybody else has said. The restaurant is fantastic. Never had a problem with the people. They're great. I'm gonna butter to them. Not a problem, and I don't see any problem where there's gonna be any parking whatsoever.
Thank you, sir.
Ken Favreau. I live at 4 O'Neill Street. I lived there for almost 30 years. I don't go there all the time. I don't know the owner. What I will say is, it's a fantastic business. When you go in there, the waitstaff he has is unbelievable. They ask you how you're doing. They, more than the waitress that waited on you, they'll all say that as you're leaving, "Have a good night. Hope you enjoyed your meal." You can eat off the floor in that place, literally. It's spotless, as some of them have already said. When they ask you if your meal was okay halfway through the meal, they actually look you in the eye, and they really mean to ask you that. They're not going by and saying, "Gee, how was your meal?" You know? They really care. The business shows it. It's just fine. This is one of the successful businesses in restaurants in Lowell, a revolving business. You know, they're renting out in the same year. This guy doesn't come to the city looking for all kinds of handouts. He's not in the golden circle downtown Lowell, where they all get all the favors. He's up in the boondocks, where, you know, nobody knows except the neighborhood. The food is fantastic. The waitstaff is fantastic. The caring of the ownership shows every day. It's almost a no, it's almost a no-brainer. You almost have to grant him this variance. He's gonna make a successful business even more successful, make a good neighborhood and better neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, members of the zoning board of appeals, my name is Mark Goldman, 58 Oakwood Street Lowell, Mass. I'm here to support the Sacred Heart Neighborhood Group on this petition, and it's a win-win situation for the city. It's a win situation for the city as a whole. It's a win-win situation for the neighborhood, and it's all about neighborhood character, and this fits in perfectly with neighborhood character of the neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Muck. Anybody else wish to speak in favor? That was like a commercial for your restaurant. Anybody here wish to speak in opposition, in opposition? Step right up, ma'am.
Deborah Nichols. I live at 23 Anderson Street. I've been there over 30 years. I have pictures of the restaurant, and we live on the one-way street, of which people park using the restaurant. They park going the wrong way on the street. They park on the sidewalk. We cannot get out of Anderson Street. When the Anderson Street, they're parked on both sides. As we go to pull out left or right, the cars are too far parked to the corner. I've talked to our neighborhood services, Amira Mercier. They continually put signs up, and the signs somehow get removed. No parking from here to the corner. I have pictures of which, when you call, they say, "Call the police station. It's not their job to keep on coming up." Well, it is their job, but they have better things to do. Why? Pictures of?
Bring the pictures up, ma'am. Well, if you address us, you just have to address us from the podium. That's the way it works, okay? But I can see the pictures. So, continue, ma'am.
The pictures of cars that are parked on the sidewalk. The children have to walk out in the main Gorham Street to go around. We just can't see, even with the snowbanks, no matter how good of a job the city does plowing. The sidewalks aren't always passable, and you can't see to get off of Anderson Street. You just can't see to get off Anderson Street, and if we get into an accident, it's our fault because we don't have the right of way. There's not, there's 13 parking spots for Good Time Restaurant. That's all there is. Gorham Street, the opposite side of Gorham Street is where the bus station is, where they drop off the bus off and on. There's a snowparking emergency there. There isn't really much place you can park for. On the end of Weed Street, I believe, there's a real estate company there where they park.
Okay, so your problem is you don't think there's enough parking right around?
There's not enough parking, and we can't see to get out of Anderson Street. If people are parked on both sides of the road, it's a one-way street, people park, they even come down the street, Anderson Street, the wrong way, because they're coming out of the restaurant, and they drive onto Anderson Street, and they drive down the one-way street the wrong way. We'll say, "You're going the wrong way," and they say, "We are only going one way." That's what they say. I mean, kids are playing in the street. Our children have grown up and raised, and they know it's a one-way street, and it's very dangerous. I don't know if this, you can't control where people park, but I mean, I don't know what we're gonna do. 26 more cars? I don't know.
Okay. Is there anything else you'd like to tell us, ma'am?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else in opposition, in opposition? Okay, so hearing done. The public hearing is closed. We'll open up to the board for deliberation and questions. Sorry, was there somebody else? Ma'am, it was, we already had the in favor, and we had the opposition, but I'll just note that you were in favor of it, okay? All right, so the public hearing is closed, and we'll open up to the board for deliberation, and Bill, any thoughts or questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Flood, a couple of questions. The last speaker mentioned about parking spots. Can you just give me the total number of spots that you're proposing on the site plan?
There's 18 spots on the site plan.
Eighteen. I counted up 19, but that's why I was asking. So, you got 18. Now, the six, the six that are shown in the rear, in the rear of the building where the, it says, existing two dumpsters are?
Yep.
Are those six new spots?
No, they're there now. Those dumpsters are picked up, though, at 8:00 in the morning, so there won't be anybody there to block the dumpsters coming.
So, the six spots you say that are there, is there anything lined? Are there, is that paved area? Is it lined?
It's like stone dust, stone dust.
But it's not paved?
No, not paved.
And it's not marked?
No, it's not marked.
Okay. I don't think there's a sign back there that says anything about parking either, is there?
I don't, I think, is there a sign back there, Jim, for parking? No.
Okay. The reason why I ask is, when I visited the site, I walked out back there. So, the dumpster area, so the six spots are in front of the dumpsters, but you're saying that the dumpsters are being taken care of before 8:00 AM?
Before he opens, yeah.
Okay. The other thing I noticed is, you don't have any screening back there. You don't have the dumpsters either behind fencing, screening. That's something I definitely would like to see.
I think the fences are all slatted, though, for privacy next door. But you're talking screening on the dumpsters.
I'm talking, yeah. I mean, that's, we're pretty consistent on how we handle that, and I believe that's in the dumpster regulation of the City of Lowell, that screening should be provided. I don't disagree that it's screened out from the neighborhood, but, okay. So, we have 18 spots. The building owner is here tonight also?
Yeah.
Could I ask a quick question of the building owner? Okay, all right.
Ron Perez. I live at 5 Brick Young Road in Chelmsford.
Hi. Quick question. Are there other, any other tenants in that building besides Good Times?
There's one tenant upstairs who does T-shirts, but he doesn't have any off-the-street business whatsoever. Everything's done by phone.
And are you seeking new tenants in that building?
No.
You're not?
This'll fill it up.
I'm sorry?
This'll fill the building up.
Okay. Now, because I saw a sign out front. I thought maybe?
Oh, no, that's, that was just there until this problem was resolved.
Obviously, the question is, if you were looking to fill the second floor with more tenants, you know, obviously?
The sign's been removed, actually.
Okay.
We took it down this week.
So, the second floor, just the existing business that's there is the only business?
Yep.
All right. Thank you, sir. How many employees are at the restaurant?
Jim, you want to answer that question?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. Most of them drive their own cars to work?
Yes. And all the employees park at the Valvoline back lot.
That's that, looks like an open, is that a shared, how, what's the arrangement over at that lot? Is that?
I plow it for them.
Okay.
I went along, and we're allowed to park in the back lot.
Okay, because again, I saw vehicles down there. That's on, down Weed Street?
Correct.
Okay. And is that only your employees are there, or do people from the neighborhood park there also?
There's some neighborhood parking.
Yeah, okay. So, you are providing at least, I'll call it, off-site, off-street parking for your employees?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. That's all I have for now, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Gary, anything?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chairman. As it relates to snow removal, Counselor, is it?
Just for the record, could you state your name and address for the record?
James Booton, 40 Crosby Road, Drakeham, Mass.
Thank you. Mr. Booton, as it relates to the snow removal, you say you plow on the existing parking within the restaurant property. Do you plow there, or do you actually remove it from the property?
I, I plow it, but I move it to the back lot of Valvoline.
So, you don't plow any existing spaces? So you don't plow any existing spaces with snow? You don't?
The restaurant and the sidewalks completely cleared out. No snow.
The sidewalk on Gorham Street or Gorham and Anderson?
Actually, Gorham and Weed. And Anderson, yes. Everything in front of the building, touching the building property is completely moved to the Valvoline parking lot.
Okay. Just one question as it relates to the agreement with Valvoline. You do have an agreement here for twenty-four spaces. What are their operation hours? Are they open on Saturdays and Sundays or?
They're Monday through Saturday. I believe it's eight to five.
And they're like a, correct me if I'm wrong, like a Jiffy Lube, the in-and-out service? They don't do the automotive repair? Because I didn't see?
No automotive repair, just oil changes.
I didn't see, I did see some cars parked there, but I think you answered my question. It might have been some resident parking and employee parking. As it relates to your twenty-five employees, at any given shift, what is the maximum number of employees you might have on shift?
We'll probably have, Friday will be the most and that's about thirteen.
And those will be our parking, originally in the off-site parking of Valvoline?
Correct, all the time.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All set, Gary, anything?
All set, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Vesna?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To the plot, the additional possible parking spaces that the lease that you spoke of, the twenty-four parking spot with the oil change places, is that correct?
Yes.
The, what is the hour of operation for the instant oil change place?
Nine to five.
Nine to five. And do they open also on Saturday?
Yes, Saturday, but they close Sunday.
With your restaurants, what is the busy hours for the restaurants and day?
That would be Friday from probably five to seven-thirty.
So the operation hour for the instant oil change will be closed by then, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And the arrangement, the letter that was signed and written and signed, is this like a condition? Is like an agreement, but yet to have it into, put into contract, so to speak? Attorney, contract?
I think it's an agreement. He does the plowing and maintains it and they let him park cars over there.
One other question I have, I just want to clarify. The, including the additional sitting arrangement, is that a hundred and eight seat?
Correct.
In total?
Hundred and eight in total, right.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Cory?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chairman. Well, besides, I'd like to commend the petitioner for the great job he's done at that location. I know the struggles firsthand of a small restaurant and what it takes to be a success and I commend you for that. And at the same time, you've been very responsible to the neighborhood and they adore you very much. As they displayed here this evening, they here very supportive of your business. And I think that's great. So with that being said, you deserve our fullest consideration for that. But, so the gist of this is, so basically we're adding, we're going from twenty-five hundred square feet, we're about doubling this amount of square footage, twenty-five hundred to about fifty-two hundred. But only about twenty-nine additional seats because you're adding restrooms and kitchen and all-new equipment of all sorts. So that's great. That's outstanding. So I really don't see any additional stress in the neighborhood with these additional seats. I think you're very much a neighborhood restaurant and a lot of foot traffic too. And I think that's great. But a few things, if this does get approved, you know, we need to, as the resident on Anderson Street stated now, probably the situation is when you get to the top of Anderson Street and there's vehicles, you gotta edge out a little bit further so you can see left or right. And it very well may pose a danger. So she might have a valid point. So what I'd like to see is maybe some additional signing out front, you know, pointing to the Valvoline lot. I think that will help your cause, really. Because it does, it may pose a danger. There's been nothing, there's been nothing to speak of yet, but let's, this will be a preventative measure, so to speak.
You can put that on the fence.
I'd be very comfortable with that. But other than that, if we can get them off the street on the Valvoline lot, if we can re-stripe and repave the lot in the rear, make a little more organization back there, not to a point now, I'm not saying the whole thing. But if we can, you know, organize that a little bit better back there, I think that will help your cause, so.
I'm sure that when we go in, if this is approved, the city engineer is gonna require that we do a lot to?
Yeah, okay, we can make that a condition. I mean, we're here to work with them and I think it's definitely a plus for the city and the neighborhood. You've done a great job there and you have my support, so.
What he's also doing is taking off the parking space on the corner of Anderson and Gorham. So that's gonna open that up. It's gonna be landscaped, nothing over three feet.
That's part of the landscaping plan. Excellent. All right, well, I think that'll alleviate the resident on Anderson, that will help out greatly. So I think it's a great plan. I think you've done a great job. Keep up the good work. If this does get approved, I wish you the best. Thank you very much.
Okay, Rick, anything?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I know the building well. I grew up in that neighborhood thirty-something years. I am a patron. I do know the owners and stuff. I won't be voting on this. But he does a great job up there for the neighborhood. I myself would like to see a little bit more parking. I asked Mr. Flood to go out and get a letter. The last time he was here, he did for the Valvoline parking. There's no way we can add any more parking to that, right, Mr. Flood? Because of where we stand with the zoning lines, right? Again, I know the area, so Anderson Street is a tight area to get out of. If we can try to keep the snow off the corner, get some signage out there to tell people it's a one-way street. I can't remember if the signs are there or not. At one time, I think when they repaved that area, there used to be do not enter signs. I couldn't remember. If they're at the end of the street.
There's no parking signs here at the corner?
Yeah, two of them.
There's two parking signs, no parking here to the corner?
Yep.
City put up.
See if we get the city engineers out there to put a, you know, do not enter sign on the Anderson Street one-way. It is, it is tight up there, but it is a good family restaurant for the neighborhood. It's, again, very well taken care of. That's the other, the only thing was I'd like to see the snow removal continued to be removed off that corner. So if you could do that, that'd be one of the conditions and also?
It's not a problem. He's been doing it for years, he continues to do it.
Yep. The screening around the dumpster, I think that's an ordinance also my colleague brought up. And that's it for me. I'd like to see this go. This is a very nice plan. Thank you.
Okay, Rick. And I've been in the restaurant a lot over the years too. And I've had this, whether it's lunchtime or the afternoon or the weekend, I've had the same issue with parking. But, you know, it's Gorham Street, so the worst-case scenario is you find a spot further down Gorham Street and you walk up. But oftentimes I find a spot right in the parking lot. Such a busy place, people are leaving and coming. So it's not like the cars are parked there all day long. And somebody made the point that the parish, the Sacred Heart, had closed and now it's a gathering place. I note that every time I go in there, that seems to be where a lot of the older folks in that neighborhood, it's the only place they can go to see each other again if they didn't have that. And I guess my only complaint with the restaurant, it is a little bit congested in there. So I think there is definitely, you know, a good case to be made for expansion there. I'd much rather see the building be used, because let's face it, the owner's gonna maximize the use of that building regardless. And I'd much rather see it to be consistent with the business that's there right now. An expansion of the very same business that he has complete control over. And there's no dispute or arguments between he and the tenant or any of his customers and whatever customers become of what would be a new tenant. So I think all in all, it's a win-win situation, which we don't often see. So I'm completely in support of it. I do agree with Cory's condition that we put some signage on the fence because I think the woman from Anderson Street made a very good point. And I do see that myself. When it's there, people do go the wrong way down there. I don't necessarily think we can pin that entirely on Good Times, but, because I've gone down the wrong way there when I'm not going to Good Times. So it's, it's not clear that you can't a lot and, you know, there is a sign. But I think if there's a sign at Good Times noting that you can't go that way, it might help a little. And I'm not aware of any serious accidents or anything as a result of that restaurant. So I feel comfortable that it's not really a very serious safety issue. So I'm in complete support of it with that one condition about the signage. So any other follow-up comments or anything by anybody?
Back to the conditions.
Yep.
The, I want the screening on the dumpsters.
Sure, that's right.
The only thing I think you're gonna have to look at on how you're gonna screen that is if you want the truck to be able to get in there, obviously the dumpster's gonna have to be positioned. I think you have them, do you have them facing towards the building right now?
No, they're?
Aren't they, are they turned sideways?
Yes. Almost like kitty corner.
Yeah. Can you keep them still kitty corner like that for the trucks to get in there?
Yes.
To also have it screened?
Correct.
Yep. And, Mr. Chairman, what about the paving and the six spots being lined?
Right, I think, is it, that's on the plan, right?
It's on the plan and I'm sure the city engineer is gonna?
So we'll make that a condition?
Yeah.
Under the new driveway regulations.
Correct, yeah, okay.
So do you want to make that a condition, Bill? Do you think that's sufficient to?
Well, I think with Mr. Flood saying he thinks, you know, the city engineer's gonna insist?
You have to do that now.
That they do it now.
That was my thought.
So that will fall into the engineer's office, Mr. Chairman?
So we have the two conditions, the signage and the screening of the dumpster.
Can I ask you a question on the signage? What did you want? I mean, we'll put a sign, traditional parking across the street, but you're talking about Anderson Street? I think the city should put a one-way sign.
Right, I don't, I think maybe we just make a note to refer to the sign department or to the, you know, who would handle that, traffic department?
Yeah, usually the sign department will make up signs. The traffic engineer usually would look at.
Okay, so why don't we refer that issue to the traffic engineer? But the signage that's gonna go on as a condition will be the further parking on the Valvoline?
Yeah, because I don't think we can put anything on that street, no.
No.
So is Weed Street, just so I'm clear, the Weed Street, the separate parking area? Is that gonna be for employees and customers?
Customers, right.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so I need a motion.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, with that being said, I'll make a motion to approve with the following conditions. That the petitioner installs screened fencing around the dumpsters and signage be installed indicating that additional parking is available at the Valvoline parking lot.
Okay, need a second?
Approve with conditions. Yeah, second.
Second.
Yeah, well.
Okay, roll call, please. Mr. Gary? Approve with conditions. Mr. Perrin?
Approve with conditions.
Mr. Noon?
Approve with condition.
Mr. Bailey?
Second. No, approve with conditions.
Mr. Belanger?
Approve with conditions.
Okay, sir, you've been approved unanimously with the following conditions that you've heard. Please, Mr. Flood, if you can come up and sign a plan? Gary, do you have a plan? Sign a date, that chip?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, everybody, for your input.
Don't go back to the lady.
Okay, the next petition is ZB 2010-000038. Polai Lee, owner sixty, Nickel Street, to maintain an existing carport with insufficient siding and rear yard setback in proximity to the house pursuant to Article Five, Section 5.1 of the zoning code. Okay, I'll recall that petition, ZB 2010-38, Polai Lee, owner sixty, Nickel Street. Welcome, sir.
Yeah, my name is Polai. I'm from sixteen Nickel Street, Lowell.
And what would you like to tell us, sir?
Yeah, that's a request about the carport, you know?
Okay, so by reading your application, you want to maintain an existing? You wanted to maintain an existing carport?
Yes.
Now, I'm presuming that you already built this carport?
Yes.
And you weren't, were you aware that you needed to come before the board to get approvals?
Yeah, because when people to build up for the carport, you know, so they don't say anything to me at all, you know? So I say like, I have to go to pick up the license or city something. They say they don't worry about it, you know, they just build up, you know? Because that one I do have for like two or three years already.
Okay, do you remember the name of the company? We just have had a lot of these recently for some reason. It's, I don't know, the company's soliciting business for people. We're not getting the proper approvals. But normally what you're supposed to do, sir, is get approvals and then build the carport. But it seems as though, if I'm reading this correct, you have the carport already there? Then you realized after the fact that you need to get approvals?
I, you know, I have no idea at all, you know, so.
You what, sir?
Because I already, you know, like, I like to keep the carport, you know? That's what, you know, we appeal for then, you know?
Right, no, I understand. I understand. But you were not aware before, you didn't know that you had to come before the board?
No, no, I didn't know that.
Okay, anything else you'd like to tell us, sir?
Excuse me?
Is there anything else you'd like to say about your carport? Have you talked to any of your neighbors?
No.
Have any, have any of your neighbors voiced any concern about it?
No.
So it's been there for how long, sir?
Excuse me?
How long has it been constructed? How long have you had it?
How long that I got it?
Years, how many years or months?
Like three years already.
How many years?
Three.
Three years, okay. Okay, anybody here wish to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? In favor in hearing none? That portion of the public hearing is closed. Anybody here wish to speak in opposition of this petition to maintain a carport? In opposition? Okay, in hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed and we'll open up to the board for consideration. Bill, any questions or concerns?
Yeah, I guess I'll ask a question towards the city department. Do you have any idea why all of a sudden these are coming up? Is somebody reporting this or is there an inspector going by or?
I expect it's probably a combination of things, but I do know that the building inspectors are making a little bit more of an effort to go out into the neighborhoods and check into things. But it's, I think it's a combination. I have too noticed, though, that there are a lot of these carports coming through where the sales reps are saying that there's no, there's no permit review needed, that it's totally illegal.
Do you have any idea if there's any issues around intended use of them? In other words, you can put one up, but can you use it for storage or put a car in or?
I think that they're viewed as accessory parking structures, just like a garage, parking garage would be.
So if it's not an accessory for parking, then what's the next recourse?
I suppose you could, well, you could use it for storage, I suppose. But it's a very similar kind of dimensional standard for storage accessory buildings. It's, you know, to base to a residential primary structure.
Sir, do you use, are you using your carport for vehicle storage or are you using it for something else?
Yeah, just, you know, to protect my car, you know?
I'm sorry?
That I, that we build that one because I just want to, you know, to protect my car.
Protect your car?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you are using it for your motor vehicle?
Right.
Okay. That's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Gary?
I guess my only concern would be, as it relates, it's been up for three years. With no permits, building inspectors, engineers, you know, what's the structural condition of the build, of this carport? In all fairness to the petition, I'm not knowing he needed the permit. And the state here that the salesman is telling him he didn't, he wasn't required. Is there any way we can find out if this is the same company going around soliciting these, these carports in these neighborhoods? If they're gonna be going out looking at, the building inspectors and people are going out looking at these things for permits and structural sound? I think it might be, you know, beneficial to us to try to be maybe proactive to find if this is one company and maybe get in touch with those, those sales reps and all the owners of those companies and determine whether, one, they have the authority to do so. And secondly, more or less put their feet to the fire to let them know that there is a permit requirement. know that there is a permit requirement, 'cause I do have concerns about carport structures going up as it relates to safety issues with snow, proper, proper structural capacity of these things, especially with residents going in and out of them on a constant basis. So, those would be my concerns, Mr. Chairman's.
Okay. Thanks, Gary and Vesna.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I noticed that the last couple of years, it has been, this issue came before us at least half a dozen of the case already, and I know that there's only a few of these businesses out there who, you know, went out to the community, particularly the Asian community, through word of mouth, when they see one carport which is being built, they ask, they inquire as to what the company, and then they go about doing that. You know, I have a, I have a feeling that the people who put this carport together, the business or the sellperson, the salesman, knew that they need to get, you know, permit, special permit to do so, yet a lot of these people, a lot of the people that, you know, got their carport built by the salesman are not aware of it. I know that the reason this case come before is because of two things, as Aaron indicated, that either the neighbor reported or the inspector drive by and noticed that. And I saw quite a bit of it the last years or so of this carport. I think the city need to educate the community about this as well so that they don't go out and purchase this without asking those questions, so that they don't have to come before three year, or two years, or five year later and saying that you have to get a permit. And I also noticed that a lot of these carporches, people used to house their car from the weather, the snow, the sun, and whatnot, so it's tough, it's a tough case. I would be, you know, I would volunteer myself, Mr. Chairman, to find out the company and, you know, talk to the inspection office, and if I need to, then I'll be volunteering myself as well to go out on those local access to educate the community even more about this issue, because we see more and more of this issue already. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thanks. And, you know, my concerns are similar. I don't think there's a huge problem approving the carport. I think the question is, are we helping you or hurting you by doing it? Because the reason you get a permit is so the building inspector can inspect it to make sure that it's safe, so it's not gonna harm you or your family, which is what the salesmen are not telling you when they solicit your business to build those. And that's my only concern. I did go by it. It appears to me to be, you know, safe and structural, but I am not a structural engineer and I'm not a building inspector by any means. So, just from driving by and looking at it, it does not look like an eyesore to me. It looks like something that's okay, but if Vesna can get to the bottom of who this company is, or, and maybe by just seeing, you know, who you wrote the check to, or if they left you any literature or anything like that, I think that would help. But this gentleman's in a situation where he's already got it, and he's coming here looking for approval after the fact. How did you find out, sir, that you needed approval from the board? Who told you you needed to come to the board, if you remember?
I got a letter from the city.
Okay, so the city saw it at some point.
Yeah.
I guess what I'm, the only thing I'm unclear about is what are you asking tonight? It just says to maintain, but is it a variance or a special permit? Because my guess is it's, it's a variance. Is that right?
I would think it'd be a variance.
Right, yeah.
So, it's a variance to maintain it, okay, because it's not clear on at least the agenda?
And when I got that's a letter from, from them, you know, so I just come to, you know, take application.
Yep.
And I had the plot plan and do everything, you know, so the guy just went on there and made sure of everything, and I will take application here, you know, so that I like to keep those.
Okay. Have you had any problem with it at all?
Excuse me?
Have you had any problems with it? Has it, have you had any problems with the carport? So, it does what you want it to do?
I do have all the witnesses, you know, so sign the letter for two, you know, so with application. That's no, nobody complained about it, you know?
Oh, okay, yeah, okay. And there's nobody here, it's a public hearing, and nobody stood up to complain about it, and everybody was notified, so, you know, that's one of the reasons why I'd be willing to grant the approval, you know, after the fact and retroactively. But I do agree with Vesna, if, Aaron, if there's anything that we can do to try to look into what's going on here, just to protect the homeowners in the city from, you know, and it's, all could just be that they're just skipping a necessary step of getting approval. It saves money, and that's probably why they're doing it. But I'd be willing to support it because the alternative is to have them take it down, and I don't think that that does any good. And how much did you pay for that, sir? Do you remember?
It should be more than a thousand.
Yeah. Yeah, so, I mean, it just seems that that would be, you know, somewhat unfair, but I am concerned that we're getting a lot of these, and I think that, you know, with Vesna's help, maybe we can figure out what's going on here and at least make the community aware of it, and then, you know, as each one comes in, maybe we'll get more information. That's my feeling.
Yes, yes, I'm in agreement with you, Mr. Chairman. This is the second one in that neighborhood in the last month or two, so I don't know if we have a rogue contractor out there, but you're well aware now, sir, that you need permits. You want to build on your home, a porch or a carport, you need permits, okay? That's why these things are in place.
Right.
To ensure these things are safe, okay? And right now, as Mr. Perrin stated, we don't know if it's structurally safe. So, you know, I'm agreeing with the chairman. It's there. It's there illegally, but, you know, it's been there for three years. Your neighbors are not in opposition, so I do support it. However, you know, I do want to send a building inspector up there to see that it's in code, and it will be up to you to get it in code, okay? I mean, you say you were misled, so we're gonna work with you this evening, so I hope you work with Mr. Noon in finding out who this was, who told you that you don't need permits, because that's not the way a contractor should be operating, okay? People can get hurt. So, I'm gonna help you, and at the same time, hopefully you can help us, okay, to get to the bottom of this. That would be great. So, I do support it, and at the same time, Aaron, I'd like to make a correspondence to the building department to, just to see that it's structurally sound. That's my only concern at this point. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, Corey. And Rick?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, we are gonna see more of these because the building department is stepping up their efforts on zoning violations. He's gonna need a variance from a front setback and distance from the dwelling. That's on the back page. I believe probably somebody in the office had put it on the back for the gentleman.
Oh, okay.
These are just metal structures that they can be bought, or they're peddled by salesmen. I don't know if they conform to the state's code, but we will have to have somebody go look at it for the gentleman. Hopefully, it is safe. Obviously, it's gone through three winters. It's probably a pretty stable building. So, that's the gist of that. He will need a variance for those setbacks. That's all my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Rick. So, I need a motion?
We don't need to make it a condition. Aaron, Aaron will send a correspondence to the building department. There's no need to make that a condition.
No, that's, the condition would be, that's a condition would place, you just ask an Aaron to do that. The conditions are anything we place upon the applicant.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the variance?
Second motion.
And roll call? Approved. Mr. Benvinu? Excuse me, I'm sorry. Mr. Bailey?
Approved.
Mr. Belanger?
Approve.
Mr. Gary?
Approve.
Mr. Perrin?
Approve.
Okay, so you've been unanimously approved to maintain the carports. The variance has been granted, and I just ask you to cooperate with anybody that contacts you regarding that. Probably a building inspector will go out to make sure that it's structurally sound, so your family doesn't get hurt by using it. It sounds like it probably is, but any way that you can help them out with information about who sold you, this would be helpful. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Good luck. Okay, the next petition, ZB 2010-00039, request for a variance. Murchy, Gary Murchy, 26 Kalanti Drive, to enclose most of an existing deck in order to create a sunroom without the proper rear setback pursuant to 5.1 of the ordinance. Welcome, sir.
Good evening. My name is John McCottrell. I'm representing Central Mass Sunrooms and the Murchys in this matter. Looking for relief for the rear setback to build a sunroom on an existing deck. Wouldn't be expanding the footprint at all. The deck is already there, and we're gonna, we'd like to enclose a portion of it.
What would you be doing with the other portion?
It's just gonna remain an open deck.
So, it would be, there would be still a platform area and then the enclosed sunroom?
Yes.
And there's not enough room in the back? Is that because of the way the lot goes down? The way it slopes downward?
Yeah, if you've got the thing, it's a weird-shaped lot in the back.
Yeah. I saw that at the site. So, can you describe the sun porch a little, sir? What's it gonna be? Is it gonna be a four-season sun porch or three-season?
Uh, no, it's considered a three-season. It's not heated or anything like that. It's not, you know, considered actual living space. It maintains a 40% glazing, and it's, it'll be a 10 by 15 sunroom, 10 feet off the house, which is the same projection as the deck. The deck is approximately 20 feet wide. We're gonna enclose 15 feet of that, leaving the other 10 by 5 feet as an open deck. We'd step out of the sunroom onto that.
Okay, so it's just like a sheltered area? There's no heat source there or no air conditioning source?
No.
Okay. And is it gonna be, the picture, is it gonna blend in with the additional house as far as the siding and everything goes? Is it...
Well, the room is basically all glass.
Yep.
Except for the structural components, and the roof is white, which matches the trim on the house. It's, they do blend in very well, yes.
Okay. Okay, is there anything else you'd like to tell us, sir?
Um, no, that's about it. Just looking for relief from the rear setback.
There may be some questions for you after we open up the public. Anybody here wish to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? In favor? Okay, hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. Anybody here wish to speak in opposition? In opposition? Okay, hearing no opposition, that portion of the public hearing is closed, and we'll open up the board for consideration. And Bill, any questions or comments?
I guess based on everything this gentleman just presented, you're gonna use the existing footprint and...
Yes.
Basically occupy whatever space you need for the sunroom and then still keep the existing deck.
Yes. It won't get any, the footprint doesn't get any bigger.
Yep. You do any thing with the foundation? Is anything hap-
Uh, yes, we're looking to add just three extra sonotubes at, you know, for structural stability.
Great. Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Gary?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
And Vesna?
No questions, sir.
Corey?
Uh, yeah, what did I call, Mr. Chairman? I think the petition does pose a hardship here. Do the topography of the land there, and this is the best way to get, you know, the best use out of the lot. I don't blame them, and I do support it. Thank you.
And Rick?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I agree. It's very tight over there. You're gonna replace the 4 by 4 porch with a 4 by 10 porch, right? That's what...
No, it's an existing deck. We're just gonna enclose, it's 10 by 20, the deck.
Okay.
We're looking to enclose 10 by 15 of it.
Okay.
Which would leave a portion of it as just an open deck.
All right. That was the only question I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Thank you.
Need a motion?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please?
Approved.
Approved. Mr. Gary? Approved. Mr. Perrin?
Approved.
Mr. Noon?
Approved.
So, you've been unanimously approved for the petition tonight, so good luck with your project.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, the next matter is ZB 2010-000042, request for a variance. William and Lorraine Boma, 166 Burnham Road, to construct a side porch without the proper side yard setback pursuant to 5.1 of the ordinance. Mr. Boma?
Yes, my name is William Boma, 166 Burnham Road.
And I'm Lorraine Boma, 166 Burnham Road.
Welcome. What would you like to tell us about your project?
We had knocked down a set of stairs that were 4 by 4. Now, we're gonna make it 4 by 8 with a roof on top. Permanent roof.
Okay. I went by there, so there's already something to the side of your house, right? So, if you're looking at the house, it's on the left side?
Yes.
Yes.
So, is it in back of that?
No, on the side, right on the side. There was a porch there, a small porch, and we knocked it down. It was falling apart. So, we just wanna put the same thing, but four feet longer and with a permanent roof.
Oh, okay. So, what's there, what's still, what's there is staying there, obviously? It's, it seems like a big room or addition?
Uh, yeah, that was already there. That's been there for like 30-something years.
Right.
That's been there.
Okay, so...
So, there's a door on that side. We just wanna put a porch to get in there.
So, just where the stairs go down? Is that, trying to, I mean, I was by there and I had a hard time figuring out...
There's nothing there now. There's nothing. The stairs are gone. The porch is gone.
So, it's just a door?
Yep. We're just waiting to...
We're just waiting to...
So, the door goes to nowhere?
To nowhere, right now, yeah. But there was a porch, a 4 by 4.
All right. So, what you're looking for is to put a little room?
No, we're not gonna enclose it. Just a porch with a permanent roof on it. It'll be an open porch.
So, like, I guess, like a stairs deck, is that what you're saying? Like, just a, when you say a porch, you're gonna have an overhang?
Yeah, a permanent roof over it.
Okay, what's the porch gonna be made out of, the deck?
Uh, it's, my son is doing it. Well, he's kinda helping.
Yeah, my son's, yeah.
Composite, composite deck.
Composite, okay.
Yeah, vinyl railings.
All right. And it's only gonna go four feet off your house?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what it was before, yes.
Originally...
There was, it was four feet before, now there's nothing there. It's gonna be four feet again?
Right, but it was four feet long. Now, it's, we want eight feet long.
Okay. Okay, anything else you'd like to tell us about it?
No, just like to get it built.
Okay. How long do you think it will take you to build it?
I don't know. My son said probably like two or three days.
Yeah, here's the handyman. I'm just like a helper.
Okay, so it's a very minor project, is...
Yes, yeah.
Okay, anybody here wish to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? Okay, and hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. Anybody here wish to speak in opposition to this petition? In opposition? Hearing no opposition, that portion of the public hearing is closed, and we'll open up to the board for consideration. And Bill?
I guess the only comment I have, Mr. Chairman, can we accept what was submitted to us? In other words, it's not like a, we didn't get like a formal, I guess I would call it a drawing, or you would refer to a sketch.
Why don't you bring up what you have, because I know we do have the sketch.
Well, although, this is, I don't know, give me a minute.
Yeah, I think we already, I think this is what we have, but let me pass this around anyway, because this, so the sonotubes is what's gonna be holding it up?
Right.
Okay. This, it makes sense to me now with this, not with what I have, but for some reason, this makes sense to me.
Yeah, they told me in the building inspector's office, just hang on to that.
Okay. Right, I think maybe this might help, but we'll pass that down and then back.
So, you've been residing at this house since 1966?
Right.
That's correct.
Right. Yeah, no neighbors opposed. They all, you know, a lot of them called when they got the postcard, and said they were fine. Most of them can't see the porch.
No, it is kind of isolated there.
Inside, yeah.
Yeah. I understand exactly what you're trying to do. I applaud you for being in the same homes since 66, so...
Thank you.
I mean, as long as this is acceptable to the board.
Yeah, that's, I think that's fine, for, it's such a minor project.
Yep. I have no other questions, Mr. Chairman.
And Gary?
Uh, no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Vesna?
No questions, sir.
Corey?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
And Rick?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, need a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Belanger?
Approve.
Mr. Gary?
Approve.
Mr. Perrin?
Approve.
Mr. Noon?
Approve.
Mr. Bailey?
Approved.
Okay, you've been unanimously approved. This is a plan. We just need you to sign that. You know, is that a plan you need for your project? Is your son gonna need that to build it? Because we have copies if you want to sign a different one.
Um, okay, I don't know, yeah.
Okay, why don't we, instead, why don't we have you sign this as copy and just date it?
We both need to sign?
Just one person's fine. Just sign a date, sir, and good luck with your project. Yep. Here's a 27. He's at twenty-seven. Thank you, sir. Okay, the next petition was ZB 2010-43. That was clear wireless, that was continued, until the next meeting. So we'll go over to the next one, which is ZB 2010 number forty-four, request for a variance, Elizabeth Bolton, 28 Thorn dyke Street, to demolish an existing garage and replace it with a two-story, two-car garage pursuant to 4.4.1 of the zoning ordinance. Welcome, sir.
Hi, for the record, my name is, uh, Bill Honeywell from thirty-six Firewell Road in Tinsley, Mass. I'm a contractor representing Ms. Bolton.
Okay, and is that Mrs. Bolton back here? Just for the record, if you want to state your name and, and address, ma'am.
Elizabeth Bolton, twenty-eight Thorn Dyke Road, Lowell, Nassau.
Welcome, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, Mr. Honeywell, can you tell us a little bit about this project? I, I went by there and I saw that there's an existing, uh, it's a Gambrel house and there's an existing Gambrel garage detached from the house that's kinda far off to the left. So I assume what you're doing is taking that down and rebuilding a, or propose to rebuild a two-story Gambrel that's consistent with what's there?
Yeah, there's a sixteen by twenty-two single-car Gable Land garage there now. And there's gonna be, hopefully, a twenty-four by twenty-four new garage Gambrel that'll match the house with a, uh, storage area on the second floor. It's gonna go in the, uh, same area as what's there now. You, you can't put it anywhere else. The other, the right side setback is only eight and a half feet to the property line now.
Okay. And there seems to be room in the back there. I went by and, uh, was it Briarav, the street behind it? Is Briarav, ma'am? And I think that's the street that, I mean, those are the people that would be impacted as, more than anything.
Yes.
Because that's the backyard. And I did notice that you handed in something where-
Yes, we had our neighbors sign-
They signed that? So all those neighbors around there? So I think thirty-three Briarav was probably right behind where you are? And they, they're okay with it?
Yes, that's, um, gray, right, gray.
Right. So I went by with these addresses here. It seems like everybody that would be at all impacted, uh, by it at all, has signed off and, and approves it, so I guess it's, it, it's a question of, um, the location on the lot. And I, I, there's absolutely no way you can put it on the right side. Is there anything else that's gonna be done to the existing structure, sir?
No, just gonna tear that one down, clean it out, put the new one right back.
Okay. Can you tell us a little bit about the construction, about, about what you plan on doing, how long it will take, and is it gonna be, is it gonna match the house, the siding and-
Yep, siding is gonna be, uh, seated, match the, same, same as the existing house. It's gonna have a Gambrel roof, match the existing house. Gonna have the same, same doors that are on it now for the, uh, overhead doors.
Okay.
It's gonna sit pretty much in the, within four feet of the same spot.
Where it is now?
Make it fit. You know what, it's six feet, it's eight feet longer. It's sixteen feet now in width. It's gonna be twenty-four when it's done.
Right. And, you know, for projects of this size, these are more the pictures that we are looking for, the ones that you gave us, that give us, you know, a real good idea of, uh, what it's gonna look like. It basically, uh, gives us the exact final product, which is very helpful. And I like the fact that you have the doghouse, the knockout in the, in the front, which I think will really, you know, add to the aesthetics of it. What about a driveway in front of that? Is it gonna, any, is it gonna be any need to increase the driveway size or anything?
Yeah, we're just, we're gonna cut it back about, uh, twenty feet ahead of where it is now and just open it up for the extra eight feet to make, hit the garage doors.
Okay, so just blend it right up to the structure?
We're just gonna blend it into what we have. We're gonna leave the entrance the way it is.
Is it gonna be anything in the back, a door in the back to get out or?
There's a side door on the right side of the building, looking at it from the street.
So for the, from the house, facing the house?
Facing the house. Man door.
Okay. All right, is there anything else you'd like to tell us about the project?
No, it's probably gonna take a month and a half once it does get going. And that's about it. It's gonna match the existing as best we can.
Okay. All right, anybody here wishes to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? Okay, in hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. Anybody here in opposition to this petition? In opposition? Okay, and hearing no opposition, that portion of the public hearing is closed. And we'll open up to the board. Bill?
One question, Mr. Chairman. Is the, uh, is the height of the new structure going to equal or be the same or less than the existing, uh, main home?
Be less than the existing.
It will be, it'll be less than?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Gary, anything?
Uh, no questions, Mr. Chairman.
And Vesna?
No questions, sir.
Corey?
No, Mr. Chairman, I, I just wanna state that I did, uh, view the property today. It's a very well-maintained home. They seem to take a lot of pride in their home. And, uh, I think this, uh, will really impact the neighborhood in a very positive way, to be honest with you. So I do support it. Thank you.
Okay, and, um, Rick?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and I feel the same way. I mean, it just, it really seems like this would be actually a better structure than what's there right now and actually look better. So, um, that's probably why the neighbors have no opposition to it, so I'd be in support of it. So I need a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
I need a second?
Second.
And a roll call.
Mr. Gary?
Approve.
Mr. Perrin?
Approve.
Mr. Noon? Uh, Mr. Beanvene?
Oh, sorry.
Approve.
Mr. Bailey?
Approved.
Mr. Belanger?
Approve.
Okay, sir, you've been unanimously, or ma'am, you've been unanimously approved. I just need your, uh, contractor to come up and sign and date both of these, um, forms and good luck with the project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, the final petition for the evening is ZB 2010-00045, a special permit for McDonald's Corporation, sixty-six Plain Street, to construct a double lane drive-through to replace an existing drive-through which was constructed before the applicable ordinance was in effect pursuant to Article twelve, Section twelve point four, uh, G of the zoning ordinance. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, my name is Chris Natto. I'm with Nobus Engineering. We're at five eighty-five Middlesex Street. I'm joined by Adam Gilmet from McDonald's Corporation. Uh, and we are here to seek a special permit for a drive-through at sixty-six Plain Street. Uh, it's currently an existing McDonald's which has a drive-through now. Uh, McDonald's is proposing to renovate the entire building inside and out. Uh, and they're proposing to add a double side-by, side-by-side drive-through at the site where there's only one, uh, order point. And let me just explain the, the side-by-side drive-through. The, the, uh, really the crunch point in the drive-through process is the order station where people pull up and order at the menu board. Um, oftentimes you'll, you'll have a person who can't decide what they want, uh, so they sit there and hold up traffic behind them. Uh, so what McDonald's has found that by providing a side-by-side drive-through, uh, if somebody is, is taking too much time at the order menu station, then they can have a second person ordering at the same time. Once the people, uh, order their meal, then they proceed. They merge into a single lane, drive up to the cash window, pay, drive to the second window, and pick up their food. And that's, that's really it. We're, we, the reason we're here is because the original restaurant which was built in, uh, early nineteen nineties, as I understand it, the requirement for a special permit for a drive-through wasn't part of the ordinance. So we never had to get that, that special permit before.
And I assume you have plenty of room there according to the plans to do that?
Yeah, we're, we're, uh, taking away four parking spaces on, uh, behind the existing drive-through. Uh, we still have a hundred and five spaces where a hundred and one is required by the ordinance, so...
Okay, so you have plenty of parking? So it's similar to when you go to a bank and there's a double drive-through at a, at a bank? It's just that, the only difference is you merge to the bank, you do your business and you leave. Here, you pick up your food at another window?
Correct.
Okay, and I'm sure that the company has anticipated, you know, what could be any kind of holdups and they, they don't want that, so it's, it's to improve efficiency?
Right, well, the problem is when you, when the queue backs up, it can back up into, uh, you know, into the site and into the street sometimes. So what this will do is relieve that, that queuing behind the order station.
Okay, do you expect that it will have any impact on any of the parking that's there? Meaning people backing out and then leaving? Is it gonna cause any further congestion or?
No, there's adequate room for vehicles to back in and, and out of the parking spaces, even with cars queued up in the drive-through lane.
Yeah, it is kind of a, a large lot there, so it seems like they have the room to do, uh, what they, what they're proposing with relative ease. Okay, anybody here wishes to speak in favor of this petition? In favor, sir?
Yes, my name is Joseph Paley and I'm the trustee for LAA Realty Trust in Worthy of Butter, um, towards the back of the lot. And I think one of the problems that has occurred over the years is the traffic tends to back out onto manufacturer's street, which is the street closest to Mahoney's. And hopefully, this is gonna prevent people from, um, not being able to turn in there. Right now, they turn in and because there's a backup sometimes, uh, manufacturer's street becomes backed up. So we think it's a great idea. We support it, um, a lot. Hopefully that'll relieve the, uh, problem. The only question I would have for McDonald's, and I've asked them about this before and they said they'd look into it, I just wanna put this on the record, not as a condition, but as a question. There is another street to the other side which is called Waterloo Street. I think you can see it on the submittal there. And Waterloo Street is paved up to the back of the Walgreens. So Walgreens, when, when you pull in from Chelmsford, from Plain Street into Walgreens, you're actually pulling into Waterloo Street, which is a twenty-foot private city street. And I'm not really sure the difference between what a private street is and an unaccepted street. It's-
So when you pull into Walgreens, that first, you know, e- exit or where, where you go in?
The one closest to McDonald's. That's actually Waterloo Street.
Really?
If you look, yeah. If you look on the plan, you'll see it. Um, they did a pretty good, pretty good job of submitting it. I think, they submitted a lot of plans. Can you see it on the ones you're looking at?
No, I did see that and I, I think I was confused-
It shows on some and it doesn't show on others.
That's right, the side of the parking, all right. Who are you, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Rick.
It's the existing conditions.
Go ahead, I'm sorry. Sir, you have to talk from the podium because I'm getting all-
The one, Mr. Surveyor's plan, um, shows Waterloo Street there.
It's the existing conditions plan? Okay, all right, and Rick?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I believe it's a private way.
Right.
That is, that is owned, I, I believe would be owned by Walgreens and whoever backs up to it, unless Walgreens has full ownership of it.
Again, I'm not an attorney, but as I understand private streets, or private ways, and I, I'm not sure if there's a difference between the two, but as manufacturer's street kinda toodles on between, uh, McDonald's and Mahoney's, it sorta goes in front of my building. And I, I've been told, and again, I'm not an attorney, that if you own both sides of the street, you own the street. If you own one side of the street, you own half the street. And I think the city's even talking about, it was in the Lowell Sun not too long ago, about, you know, these streets. What I was hoping they would just consider is having it be, um, a curb cut so that people can go in and out on Waterloo Street and then exit that way, so that there would be an area. It's all paved except for ninety feet. And when Walgreens came in, excuse me, they, um, they, they were forced, not not forced, but they agreed to pave it. And I know that it would allow more traffic to go, um, obviously from my property than down and out to, uh, Plain Street. And it might, and, uh, relieve the traffic. But I wanna go on, I support the project. And if it's not a good idea, I don't wanna be, um, obstructionist on this, 'cause I think it, it should be a-
A couple of drive-throughs.
-good thing for the neighborhood.
Okay. Okay, thank you, sir. And I guess all we can do there is just refer to the engineer's office to see if they have any thoughts on it, just the curb cut? I mean, I, to me, it, it thinks, if, if the curb cut would go into Walgreens, wouldn't that, that impact the, the people at Walgreens?
Sure, and, I mean, it, basically what, uh, I think Mr. Paley was talking about is paper streets, which are street right-ofways that aren't built out completely.
Right.
Abutting owners, or abutting parcel, property owners to that paper street have ownership to the center line, but passage rights over the entire paper street. That includes everybody along the street. Um, so if there's any kind of paving or if there's gonna be a, a, a build-out, everybody along that, that owns property adjacent to the paper street, first need to provide approval or consent to it being built out. Um, and then whoever wants to build it up can do so. As far as adding another curb cut, I'd have to have to look at a traffic impact analysis on that.
So just if, if that comes up, if somebody could, but I, but I think, you know, we need to stay back on this project where, um, the gentleman supports the project, um, but just had that comment, so we could just make a note of that. And, um, okay, any other? Anybody else wishes to speak in favor of this? Favor? None? Anybody in opposition? In opposition and none, so we'll close that public hearing and open it up for consideration? Any thoughts, Bill?
Yeah, just, uh, just one comment, I guess. Is this, uh, setup going to be similar to the, uh, the site in Chelmsford? Up at Drum Hill? Is it the same type of concept?
It is. And I actually, I have a picture here if you wanna see, uh, actually a picture of the Lemonster site, if you're interested in seeing that.
Well, if it's similar to the one in, um, Drum Hill.
It is.
Not that I've been through there, but, uh, but I've, I've noticed a big difference. And if you pull in there, especially with the two lanes, I've never, I've found it very convenient to, to pull in there. And I understand the part of people pondering what they're going to order. And I would think it would alleviate this gentleman's concern about, uh, that side street where people kinda pull in on the side. At least it gives them almost two lanes of shot. I would assume they would shoot for the right side. Is it gonna be in the exact same area where the order, ordering is taking place right now?
Yes, it will.
Okay, and you have plenty of clearance to build that second, second aisle there?
We do.
Yep, okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. I, all I can say is, uh, I've seen it work pretty well out in Chelmsford, so, uh, I would envision it working here. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Bill. Gary?
Uh, no questions, Mr. Chairman.
And Vesna?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I, this request, I don't see any impact on the traffic coming in and out of either, uh, manufacturers or the Plain Street. In fact, I think this is gonna improve the service, uh, that McDonald's provide to its customer because of the, you know, the short, shortened time of waiting to, uh, order for your meal. So I'm in favor of this petition.
Thank you, Vesna. Corey?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I think it's a great plan. I think, um, you know, that's the way the trend is in the industry. I let the experts confirm, but it seems to be seating capacity, there's a much less need for it and a much higher need for drive-through, is what's the impression I'm getting from the industry and the way the business is headed. So, um, you know, this will really help, uh, relieve the traffic. And it's a very busy street. And, uh, I think two lanes will, will definitely help that as well as the abut up, uh, in the rearview. So, uh, I do support it. I think it's a great plan. Thank you.
Thank you. And Rick?
Uh, no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so I need a, um, motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the special permit.
And I need a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Perrin?
Approve.
Mr. Noon?
Approve.
Mr. Bailey?
Approved.
Mr. Belanger?
Approve.
Approve.
Mr. Gary? Approve. So you've been unanimously approved, and just need to come up here and sign, uh, one of these forms, and you should be all set. And good luck with the project.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. Okay, Cory, do we have any other, um, minutes to approve, or any-
Nope, Mr. Chairman, there's no other business, no minutes to approve, so with that being said, I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.